But what do we think?
I thought like the least suitable. It stays. Into the official space. Nation. And with this song, we have a pretty anxious spring.
Thank you so much. If you've got everybody listed here, I was informed by Mr. Armstrong, he's having, or having physical issues, he should be heard. I want to be looking over the dates. On the trustees department has a signature here. Uh, we will look for a motion in a second to approve the meeting for reading minutes. Seven twenty twenty five and to file the uh June eleven twenty twenty five architectural review board minutes as presented. Most of the through me well.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, discussions? Lisa.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify um. In the paragraph about the post session, convenient to post session. Um, and I believe that, just see. The motion that we talked about um left out that it was an interim village administrator position? Or is this really referring to the fact that we're talking about that we made a motion for discussing the two um search?
I'm sorry, is that for the minutes as presented here?
Yeah, because I'm questioning.
Questioning the minutes as presented?
Correct.
Okay, so the minutes as presented, which were uh written here, were um that we were to contact municipal executive search recruitment firms and make recommendations to the board at this next meeting.
Yeah, that's what we're actually pertaining to closed session. I think what trustee Harbeck was asking is should we add additional verbiage to that? To say that not only are we talking about the recommendation, but also the interim village trustee position?
I certainly am open to that.
Yes, that is exactly what I meant.
The words I had here.
For transparency, we need to.
Yes.
And uh, Michael, I'm sorry, I'm just uh looking for some clarification of is so, and I wasn't at the meeting, so, but um. You're seeing the motion as reflected in the minutes is not accurate.
It's, to me, it's not complete. We were making a recommendation to hire a search firm to help us fill the village administrator position. Agreed, the verbiage is not complete. We, we came out of that and agreed with two things. One was to have trustee Harbeck and president Delorid to bring the recruitment firms to us and also the discussion of the interim. Village trustee. Village administrator, excuse me.
I think we're all.
There's my.
Yep. So they can land back in the morning. Uh, so the motion will be uh. Motion to direct president, fellow trustee Harbeck to contact municipal executive search recruitment firms and make a recommendation. To the board at its next meeting and to.
Discuss the interim position on pretty much trustee.
Uh administrator.
Administrator, excuse me.
Okay.
Talking for um to contact municipal executive search recruitment firms to hire a village administrator. Temporary, no, no, we're, we're contacting the executive firms to hire an administrator. So accurate?
I don't know. Quite accurate. I think that some of the way it came out was that we um that you and I were going to be contacting municipal executive search recruitment firm to make a recommendation to the board. Um, for uh search. A um, a administrator.
Yes, to hire a firm.
That was a search.
Yes.
It was not to hire, it was to search.
Uh, no, I believe it was to hire a firm.
Understood what you're saying, but we're looking for a recommendation to hire or to um recommend. A uh firm for search.
Or consideration in addition to the discussion of. Temporary. Village administrator, the interim village administrator. It's, it's, and it's two discussions.
I, I think the, the intent is that uh you, you would be contacting these executive search recruitment firms. And make a recommendation to the board uh regarding the search firms.
Right.
And then you're indicating and also to discuss uh hiring the interim administrator.
Correct.
Were we in agreement on that?
Sure, because we're going to be hiring a search firm, yes, and the second part that you said, correct.
Amy.
I think it was to bring back some consideration of companies that we were going to use. For con- for consideration of searching.
Okay, got it. Okay, with those changes. Herman, you're clear on that? Okay, the motion in a second, all in favor, say aye. Uh, both. The motion carries. I'm right at the point here where we're looking uh to listen to people who uh request to be heard. Uh, I believe I have four folks here who would like to. Uh, state name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Mueller and I'm with the Grafton Area Chamber of Commerce located at sixteen twenty four Wisconsin Avenue. I'm honored to be here today to express my sincere gratitude for our continued partnership in shaping Grafton into the vibrant community that it is. I want a special thank you to the Parks and Recreation Board, our dedicated trustees. And the Grafton Tourism Promotion and Development Committee, in which Jessica Wolf, Chad Hoyer, and Dan Delorid sit on this committee. For helping us bring the kayak station to life. Your commitment to our community shines through every project. As a side note, we have surpassed seven hundred rentals. The Tourism Promotion and Development Committee's financial contributions have gone above and beyond, not only supporting the kayak station. But also making possible the beautiful new holiday light decoration, holes, bowl decorations, sorry. And serving as the lead contributor in constructing the new pavilion at Veterans Memorial Park. So I want to thank you um, the two of you that are here um for helping us make Grafton thrive. So thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Kathy Burrisson. Kathy, speak your name and address, please.
Kathy Burrisson, seven six three Cheyenne Avenue, Grafton. Um, and I'm here. I, I, I'm kind of upset, but when I first saw In God We Trust on the police cars, I thought, how did I ever miss that? And I just, you know, kind of said, okay. Uh, but when I saw the sign, the electric sign, electronic sign on Falls Road changed from a very courteous. Thank you to bless you. I was offended, I was horrified, I was shocked, I was just really enraged. And I'll see you the second time and it, it angers me. This country was based on a separation of church and state. Don't try to combine the two. This is a public, you know, Grafton, I mean, we are not a sec, we are a secular. Country. We are not Christian or anything else. If you, and we're also big um. We're also a country of immigrants. And. If we're going to say bless you. This week, next week, we should say it in Arabic. The following week, we should say it in Spanish. We should encompass everybody. And there are a lot of people, a lot of people that are gonna find offense with bless you. No one is gonna find offense with thank you. And I don't understand why that was changed. It's. It's a loss of courtesy by saying bless you. It's, it's something that. You know, if, if, if this continues, what will be the next step? What's gonna happen when we don't object to bless you? What is gonna happen the next time someone decides to put? You know, a religious symbol in the, in, you know, in the middle of something. No, this, this can't be. It, it angers me to no end.
Thank you.
I'm Christian, but I still don't want to see it. We are separate from church and state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Dean Renick, six eight five, Warland Trail. I'm just here uh understanding you're discussing the village administrator position. And as somebody who's been here thirty three years, I've won residence before that. Just thinking of moving back. Guess what? Never made it back. And why? Because Grafton's been fantastic. Everything, my wife and I are familiar with. I just wanted to speak on behalf of um Jessica as possibly your consideration for her as the interim role and also as the permanent role. And as I've known Jessica over the years, about eight years or so on the Ozak Economic Development Board. And then as a resident, I've shared concerns with her about some of the residency issues. I've always been greeted with the quick response. And on the board, always Ozak Economic Development Board, I found her to be professional, efficient, strategic, accessible, knowledgeable, helpful. And especially connected to the surrounding communities and finding best practices. So as I look at the many organizations I've worked for, have been a part of, as we look at hiring consultants, I'm not always sure that's the right answer. Sometimes it's right underneath and in your organization. And um, I know you've got a tough job. I know you're doing a great job. But sometimes maybe you look at what you already have and fill it with what I believe. Should be our next village administrator, somebody who's here with us, who has somebody who's been around for a long time, has found her to be very competent and excellent. And so I just would ask politely, that you consider her, you know, I'm not much of a political person, so I just wanted to come on here and just say, you know. As somebody who plans on living here the rest of my life, willing, it's a long time. I look forward to working with Jessica hopefully for years and certainly you, board. And thank you for all you do for our community. And I just hope you consider her for the permanent position as well as certainly for the interim position. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Yeah.
Craig.
Evening, everyone. Craig Raddits, um thirty six twenty West Meridian Court, connect one. Um, many familiar faces, certainly. And um, I'm with Producer Real Estate Development and um. Steve Curtis in uh Florence, I haven't mentioned before, but over the uh, uh, the last. Almost twenty five years, our company Producer Real Estate has been very active and involved in Grafton. Uh, we also have a lot of personal roots here and over significant investments. There are Hunter's Ridge Condominiums, uh, the Grafton Commons. We were a co-developer with Condom Properties. Fifteen oh five apartments and most recently an ongoing season set craft. Um, I'm here just to give a statement uh of my experience working with the assistant village administrator and community director, Jessica Wolf. Um, I'm here personally, uh, I remember we first worked, or I first worked with Jessica approximately four years ago. We held a meeting, we had an idea, we had four parcels that we thought would be good and suitable for our high-end posing uh options. And to my surprise, two of the four of those properties Jessica immediately dismissed because she knew what the land was. Was earned, uh, and that was the direction of Grafton is gonna go. And ultimately, I look back, or the appearance, I should have exactly correct. Uh, I will not lie here, our early meetings on the seasons were tough. Here we're bringing a, a product that's almost three hundred thousand dollar unit, very best of what we've done in our forty years history. Jessica put the village's needs in front of any personal opinion or any relationship. Um, she, some of the examples protected flock cameras, which have become quite, quite popular, but many communities are still not doing it. We significantly enhanced the sidewalk extensions and electric vehicle charging stations, and these are just one of several. Ideas that were important to Jessica and important to the village. But I will say, once the plan commission and the village board approved our project, and um Jessica became an advocate for both the village and us because truly we are a scale. Um, you're certainly all aware that the process is arduous. I remember a three to six month approval process twenty years ago for most projects out conveniently as well as eighteen months. Um, speaking with my team this week, they were counting several items that Jessica did that was above anything that we've really experienced in other countries. She was hands-on with both the fire department, rescue, police coordination. Uh, she provided assistance. One of the engineering employees was down for a while and had a personal leave and, and Jessica stepped in to make sure that those plans were. She was a huge advocate, working with the DNR sewer back relationship she has over the many years. And ultimately, she was optimal, probably saving us two months, which was on schedule for a proper start and a successful project. I have a copy of uh, I believe uh tomorrow night that the village of Grafton will be uh. Uh, it's a uh west um, a serious group with regards to uh conceptual plan. And I just. Someone sent it to me this morning, I read it and I said a smile on my face. This is the type of report that I usually see at the end of a project. This is conceptual, there's expert opinions, there are, there's a lot of work that goes into something for conceptual, so very, very impressive. Then I, I'm sure this is what you've been.
Great, I'm sorry.
So basically, this, this position that you have really is quite extensive. I think we can all agree it takes a special person. Jessica's proactive, she's not reactive. It seemed to have extremely thorough, as evidenced as I just mentioned. Very accessible, responsive, and the ability to thrive in this role. Worked with forty communities, we've developed twenty six. And then she's one of the top two persons I've ever experienced in this role as community director. I believe she will take that in and consider her at uh for the village administrator position. Thank you.
Keep tapping her. Um, so tonight, um, you know, like many people, I, I, I come up here, I want to share a personal experience that we've had, or that I have had with um. Uh, an interim city administrator or village, or I'm sorry, city and manager uh. Uh, from a previous organization that I had, and I just wanted to um share with you that the decision that you guys make tonight, it's not only gonna impact our budget. But it's gonna impact the very fabric of our village operations and our employee morale. And as I get into this, you'll understand why. Uh, there's a hidden cost that we have when we have an external search firm. Providing the interim city administrator. When we turn to the external consultants for interim leadership. We're inviting complications that extend far beyond the fees associated with them. I've witnessed this firsthand uh at the, the uh previous city that I worked at in the city of Anna. What began as a straightforward four to six month administrator surge became a fourteen month ordeal that nearly crippled our operations. The consulting firm that we hired provided an interim administrator who frankly had his own agenda. Rather than facilitating a smooth transition and an efficient search process, he actively delayed the proceedings. Why did he do that? Because he was buying for a position himself and he knew that if delayed, he could possibly slide himself right into that role. Um, every decision required additional consultation and the search timeline kept extending and he is, as he maneuvered his, uh, maneuvered to make himself indispensable. When we finally, actually not we, but when the bill, uh, city council. Finally recognized what was going on, they terminated the consulting contract and they had to start all over with this process in its entirety. The new internal interim manager accomplished this in three months from the consult, from what the consultant had drawn out for nearly a year. That internal was actually an internal uh candidate, I'm sorry, an internal uh interim. The damage was done, however. We lost talented employees who were frustrated with the uncertainty, spent thousands in additional consultation fees. And watched department morale plummet as staff questioned whether leadership cared about stability. So our current department heads and senior staff have institutional knowledge, they're established relationships, and they have a genuine investment in our village's success. They understand our unique challenges, our residents' needs, and our operational intricacies in ways no consultant could ever provide to us. Choosing the internal in interim administrator demonstrates confidence in our team while providing a steady, knowledgeable leadership our village deserves during this transition. So I urge you to trust in the talent that we already have. Appoint an internal and interim administrator. Who can maintain continuity, preserve morale, and guide us through an efficient search process. Our employees, our residents, and our budget will all benefit from this decision. The choice is clear. Invest in the people who are already invested in us. And I ask this just because I have personal experience with this and I understand what happens with those bad. Thank you, Derek. All right, anyone else to speak? Okay, move on to this presented as the president. Uh, I do have several uh letters here all in support of Jessica. I'm not gonna read through each one of them, but uh as I don't know uh who these made it out to, I'm going to commit them to the record here. Uh, this one is from Stacy uh Booney, president of the Grafton. Um, she's writing in support of Jessica stating Jessica is a self-advocate for Grafton and its residents, reaching out to me as business leader with community concerns, all while maintaining the utmost professionalism. And understanding the business needs of the community. She's impressed with Jessica's insight, her competence, and her organization. She's reliable, dependable, and handled sensitive topics and situations with poison professionalism. Next Kathleen Schilling, uh, who is uh from OED, executive director of OED. I've worked with Jessica personally since starting to work with the village. It's always uh Jessica. Uh, and she states that if there's a project where she is uh responsible for an element, it is always done on time and correctly. Jessica often attends county-wide events representing Grafton and putting the best face forward. I'm not sure that you'll be able to find anybody better for this position. I work a lot in government administrators and can comfortably say she's one of the best in the region. I have one here from um H Ben Levy, uh, from Levy and Levy Attorneys at Law. He states. Jessica's exceptionally bright, very well-spoken, and tremendous advocate for the people who village can all to attest, also attest to the fact that Jessica is well-respected by her peers and leaders in, in the county. Pam King uh writes a very long letter here and on some, uh, some insights. Jessica volunteered with the chamber, served on our young professionals committee, tourism promotion development committee, volunteered at ladies night out. She also received the twenty nineteen Grafton Area Chamber of Commerce Outstanding Community Partner Award and in twenty twenty three was named one of the forty under uh. Forty young professional award recipients. These are awards are a testament to her commitment. The lumberyard project is a fantastic centerpiece for the community and I believe that the project came together and was completed because of Jessica's project management skills. She completes by saying that um, we've come very far in ten years and it would be a shame to see all of your efforts make. Uh, make Grafton the envy to the rest of the county stall or even backwards, but of Jessica. John Worth uh from Digital Edge uh summarizes, one would think that it's a seamless transition uh uh would be uh, would be the, the situation we would want to be in. And he recommends Jessica as she is someone well-respected and known for honesty and integrity. Brian McLaren from uh, a principal from H Knox uh cites Jessica's professional, timely, and thorough communication and maintained a consistent message about the quality of development that the village would expect. She's highly educated in. And the field has excellent professional communication and is thoughtful problem solver. Um, and uh, he has heard that there is a movement to engage an expensive interim administrator in addition to a recruitment service. And uh, he believes uh Jessica would be um a great choice. Lastly, I have to read a letter that came to me late this afternoon from Slavik Roll, vice president of Cave Comfort. Dear President Delorid, we are writing as one of Grafton's local businesses to expect our, express our strong support for Ms. Jessica Wolf regarding your consideration for the village administrator position. Our company has had the opportunity to work closely with Jessica over eight years in capacity and planning and development director, and more recently as assistant village administrator. Throughout that time, Jessica has demonstrated an exceptional level of professionalism, dedication, and responsiveness. Time and time again, she has gone above and beyond to support the needs of local businesses. And foster productive working relationships between village and private sector. Jessica consistently brings thoughtful, balanced insights to planning and development. Initiatives that serves both the interest of economic growth and the well-being of Grafton's residents. Her extensive qualifications paired with more than a decade of direct experience in village operations make her uniquely equipped to step into a leadership role from day one. Just as important as her professional abilities is Jessica's genuine commitment to the Grafton community. She's visible and engaged, present at community events, including but not limited to parades, ribbon-cutting ceremonies, presentations at local nonprofits and others. Her passion for strengthening our village is evident in everything she does. Jessica is not simply an excellent administrator. She is a true community advocate. We were disappointed to learn that the majority of the village board chose not to appoint her as interim village administrator. Like you believe, we believe. That individual, individuals who have served the village with excellence and integrity deserve strong consideration when advancement opportunities arise. While we understand the value of conducting a thorough executive search, we respectfully urge the board to recognize that sometimes the most qualified candidate is over in loss. Jessica Wolf has earned the trust and respect of this business and many others in Grafton. We hope this letter will read publicly at an upcoming board meeting as a statement of our sincere support for candidacy. Thank you for your continued service and for considering our perspective as a local stakeholder. And that's the completion. Most of the letters that I'm aware of, um, those will be uh for the public record. Bring on to uh Resolution Ordinance Action, I didn't village attorney legal services, Jessica.
Yeah. On December second of last year, the village board approved a one-year contract with Hausmann and Fine for legal services. The intent at that time was to conduct a request for proposal process for legal services in mid twenty twenty five. With the administrator's departure, staff is recommending an extension of the legal services contract through twenty twenty six. And uh, the new hourly rates for twenty twenty six were included in the staff report. That RFP process um would then be completed in twenty twenty six under the new administrator.
Very good.
Oh my gosh. I'll second.
Sir, Kevin first, yes, first.
Question, uh, in the seventy-five year that we've worked with Hausmann and Fine, at any point has the village of Grafton uh checked the market periodically just to see what other rates from other legal firms would be for us?
I believe the administrator checked rates two years ago, just an informal um rate check, and they were similar to what we were paying at that time. Um, there aren't actually many firms in Ozakie County or in our area that specialize in municipal services, municipal legal services. So there's a small pool unfortunately of, of applicable firms.
I understand. Uh, other than the two years, was it done any other time in the last seventy-five years?
I'm not aware of any.
All right, so I'm reading this um as. A village trustee and a resident, I just had a concern. And the biggest concern for me right now is the fact that um. You know, we've worked with you guys for seventy-five years and so number one, I just think that it would be nice to shop around for the taxpayers. And if it comes out where the numbers are even and fine, but we owe it to the taxpayers to at least shop around. This is America, it's a buyer's market, we should just be checking. Even if the pool is small, doesn't matter, let's just see what the other numbers are. So that's my number one concern. The deeper concern for me is that it says, and I quote, due to the pending departure of the village administrator and our high level of workload on current staff, there's simply not enough time or capacity to properly carry out the RFP process. I disagree with that statement. It doesn't matter whether we are going to assign an internal temporary person from internal the village. Or if it is a third party from one of these firms that uh Ms. Harbeck and President Delorid are bringing to us. Either way, we still owe it to the taxpayers and the residents of Grafton to do what is right and shop around and get some numbers. So unfortunately, I will be voting no on this based off of that principle for me. And I just had to say that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Come on. Please.
Um, yeah, I'm just disappointed that this process wasn't started. You know, we knew this was coming up. We renewed it, we renewed it a number of times.
We renewed it, we renewed it a number of times, you know, which has been fine. Um, and we have had past um, considerations of other firms in in the last fifteen years. But I am disappointed that it's July and apparently the process has not even been started, so thank you.
Yeah, what else? Um, I do, I'll I'll make a quick comment here in that um, it's it is um, of course disappointing that we uh, have not moved forward with the R F P. However, I think with um, potentially a new administrator coming along, I I think that we need to look at the quality of the services that we have. And I I don't doubt that our quality of services have been fantastic. I think we need to kind of pick and choose what we wish to look at in the next six months. And certainly I would hate to take a new administrator that came in here and say, look, we have a new, uh, we have a new law firm or a different law firm starting on January one is where we would be. And that would certainly be a potential problem if we look at uh, recruitment, uh, recruitment we know is going to take between sixteen and twenty four months or twenty four weeks. Uh, that would put us in a situation where we'd have to make another decision. So um, that's just my my point here. So your motion and second, any further discussion here? Uh, we have a motion to recommend the report enter into a one year contract extension exploring December thirty first, twenty twenty six with Hausmann and Fine, L L P Grafton, Wisconsin for attorney, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. So let's, I think you've done that, Karen. Very good. All right. Moving on to license books. Uh, Jessica.
Um, we are at department and officers reports. The just a, just a, a brief of update of just some items that I learned from departments this morning. The Limekiln Park parking lot replacement will start August eighteenth. Um, Director Studdahar attend attended the Civmic Summer Conference last week, um, which covered some items, including liability insurance for police departments, how that is increasing and um, municipal workers claim comps or excuse me, workers comp claims. Wanted to um, just notify the village board that the police department uh, phone system was down over the weekend. And staff will be working on a replacement of the failed backup system. To get that uh, backup system in in place and operational. And finally, the O C F D budget workshop is happening tonight at the Grafton Fire Station. So I will be uh, going over there after this meeting.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. Now let's go on to uh, approval of operators license. Operator's license for Latricia Spurgeon. I do see that um, she was uh, now recommended for.
Correct, yes. So at the last village board meeting, the board tabled action on an operator's license for Ms. Spurgeon based on an outstanding warrant um, for a probation violation in Florida. But this is from s- um, several years ago in the in the nineties. After further review by the police department, it was determined that criminal background checks um, should only cover activities in the last five years per village policy and that the previous denial recommendation wasn't oversight. The police department is recommending approval of the operator licenses um, for the people listed on the staff report, including Ms. Spurgeon.
Okay, for a motion, second. Okay, favor say.
Give me discuss.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, so um, I I just want to say, um, so in the end, everything worked out and everything is clear for her. I feel bad for her that she had to come in a public meeting and talk about her past and say that she thought that, um, you know, she was free and clear. Um, I hope that we have personally apologized to her for that. And if not, I would ask that that you would do that, chief.
I have. Chief. Jessica, I think we're okay, I mean, chief, come up to.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I had spoken with her, uh, and I expressed the, um, I didn't apologize. Just got to be upfront with you, I did not apologize because um, my office staff did what they thought was correct at the time. Um, when we looked at the ordinance, it was an oversight and everything was uh, I mean, she did have a, she currently does still have an active warrant. She was told two years ago to get that warrant cleared up. Um, so this wouldn't keep coming up. Um, of course, now, you know, I do have a a brand new staff uh, there that was not aware of this. When I looked at this warrant and everything, it was uh, on me, so I want to hold it. Um, that the ordinance specific that it was um, gotta be, it has to be directly related to alcohol offense or an alcohol establishment uh, and not within five years. But it also says in there that there can't be any ongoing, uh, pending charges or anything related to that, which was why I initially declined this. Um, but upon further looking at it and going over with our attorney's office, it had to be directly related to alcohol establishment. So for that, it was just an oversight on that, uh, is something that I'm working with attorney's office on addressing in the future. Uh, because state law does not require be specifically related to alcohol establishment. So as far as apologizing, no, I did not apologize, but I did let her know uh, that we were going to move forward. And I advised her again a second time, because she needs to clear up that warrant out.
Can you speak with your staff about it so that they understand where the confusion is?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on this? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, I oppose.
That motion carries. Great, look for a motion and second to approve the village expenditures nine hundred thirty eight thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars and eighty seven cents. Did see um, questions and answers um, that were that were based. Reminder to all, uh, if we can hit those in the room, it would be greatly appreciated. Service, look for motion in second.
Still agree. I'll second.
Thank you, Andy and Dave, any further questions? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Um, it's come to my attention that uh, with our closed session this evening, uh, we uh, and correct me on this if I'm wrong, Mike. But the recruitment services contact contract, the R F P uh, should be discussed in public. Um, there is a timeline out there that uh, we would be bringing in the representatives of the two companies that we have um, chosen that Lisa and I did discern, come up with. Um, that uh, those companies would be presenting next, uh, at the next village board meeting. Um, I guess my suggestion is if you have questions about that or questions in reference to the two that weren't chosen or why we chose those two, this would be a good time to ask them. So that way they could be answered in public. Is that sound about right, Mike?
That's uh.
No, it's not an agenda item per se on open, but is this legal to have a discussion? Because we're taking it on a closed session.
Exactly, it's noticed on the agenda and there's uh, no harm in discussing it in open. But there are no specific terms of any agreement to negotiate. That's why we're not going into, not going to discuss it in a closed session.
So, any questions?
I just, uh, Justin, could you give just a brief overview of the four firms and the just basically just the criteria of why you chose the two.
Well, it was probably one of the quickest decisions I think Lisa and I ever came to. We could be, I mean, honestly, I think we agreed to the two that were there were probably even above two minutes. And uh, we had, we had, um, actually five proposals sent to us, one did not make the timeline, I got that today. But we had um, one from P A A. We have one from M G T, formerly known as um, Gov.
Gov H R.
Yeah, Gov H R. We had one from I P A and then we had another one from Pratt and.
Uh, Splano Pratt.
Splano Pratt, Splano Pratt um, was very interested, came in at a higher rate than almost everybody, but they've not really done any government um, government recruiting in the past, so they were very interested in that, uh, but they came in approximately uh, I can say the price I think, and where they were thirty five thousand dollars for that that recruitment. Um, I P A came in, um, I P A is a small newer firm um, that was uh, uh, came in. That one came in at sixteen thousand dollars, however, it was felt that their level of experience wasn't what P A A and what um, uh, G T was. Uh, the uh, you've seen the costs associated with M G T and P A A. Um, their, I think their presentation package was very professional. I think they're probably looking somewhere around eight to ten pages, uh, at least, where I P A came in was like a two page. So, I'll give you some time here to add. I think we saw that the community engagement part was very important to us. Where P A A and M G T engage the community, not just us, but also the community. Did I miss anything?
No, no, I think you did a good wrap up. Um, the the two that we chose have been working with communities for fifty years and thirty years. Um, they have a lot of experience, we used them before, Mike, you probably remember that. Years ago, we have used one of those. Um, M G T was previously Gov H R. Um, and I P A uh, consists of two people that join together to start their own search firm. They're about six months in then, I believe. And the Splano Pratt is a company in Milwaukee that does larger companies, uh, hospitals, executive searches for big businesses. Um, they were excited to put their head in the ring, but they they didn't, you know, they have a lot of experience that way, so. Um, I think the trustees have their package and I think it's going to be, they're going to come and present at the next village board meeting.
Yeah, I'll reach out to the two, the three firms that did. It could be discussed on, I think you're, the timeline, I think is is decent to go public on. We're looking to have that um, discussion at the at the August fourth meeting and then um, go to closed session to decide which we would pick. And then uh, from there, we would move in, um, I think we're looking also to roll in um, potentially roll in the uh, public works director on this and and see uh, if there's, if if there might be some efficiency, is it in scale? And then we'll take it from there. Both of them, both of them, both of them said we're looking at twelve to sixteen weeks for recruitment. More likely, um, probably twenty weeks, twenty to twenty two weeks uh, to have somebody in person here, uh, so, and we're looking at some time. It would be late January, early February, so just to let you know. So, does that answer your question, Sandy?
Yeah.
Fantastic. All right, so at this point in time, I'd like to convene into closed session with a motion in a second pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five one C and E, considering a planned promotion compensation or performance evaluation data on any public employee or which the government has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And that would be the village administration position, uh, acting village administrator position. So I put the motion in second.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, and we'll have a roll call here starting at the seven.
Um, I will say, yes, but are we also going to discuss, um, if we will just be in closed session or Jessica will be joining us?
Jessica will be in closed session for the first part, then we will.
Okay.
Start with with Mike. Mike, you want your comment on that?
Yes, that's acceptable to have Jessica there for purpose of interviewing her, asking her questions. And then the thought is you would dismiss her and talk amongst yourselves.
Okay, so I was not aware that it doesn't really say that on on the posting and I I feel like um, we should just be talking on our own, um.
Oh, we will. Yeah, we will, I think we, uh, Jessica, uh, wanted the opportunity to be able to uh, answer any questions that we might have. And if there aren't any questions that are out there, then we will, um, we will discharge her and we'll have a chance to talk amongst ourselves. Okay?
Yes.
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 Okay, uh, we will be in the closed session.